Good evening. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. First up on the agenda, item A is city update by Mr. Brian and Ken, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, sir. This week is National Volunteer Week, April 20th through the 26th. The Pueblo Police Department is proudly served by the VAPP program, Volunteers Assisting Pueblo Police. The goal of VAPP is to provide strong partnerships between the community and the Pueblo Police Department through volunteerism, enhancing police operations by providing administrative and supportive services. Volunteers perform various duties from handicap and handicap access parking enforcement, community event assistance, training scenarios, to various data entry roles throughout the department. Pueblo Police Department and the City of Pueblo are extremely grateful for the hard work of our volunteers to do each and every day. The Pueblo Police Department, in partnership with the DEA, will host a prescription drug takeback day this Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Pueblo Municipal Justice Center Parking Lot at 200 South Main Street. Unused expired prescription and over the counter drugs can be brought by for safe disposal. For more information, visit the Pueblo Police Department Facebook page for a list of items that cannot be accepted. There will be a CDOT open house. CDOT invites the community members and business owners to learn more about the Colorado Highway 45 Pueblo Boulevard Safety Improvement Project in Pueblo. The open house is on April 24th. We'll provide stakeholders with information about the study and proposed safety improvements to Colorado 45 Pueblo Boulevard from Palmer Avenue to Avis Avenue and Vinewood Lane to Goodnight Avenue. The CDOT open house takes place Thursday, April 24th, at the Pueblo Academy of Arts on 29 Lehigh Avenue from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, also known as Pitts Middle School. For more information for the project is available at cdot.gov, and if you go to projects, there should be a tab that says CO45 Safety Improvements. Brownfield Open House, please join the City of Pueblo for the upcoming open house on Tuesday, April 29th, with the US EPA for the Brownfield Multipurpose Grant. The city will be focused on revitalization in the Bessemer and Eastside neighborhoods, and we'd like your input. Join us at the Rawlings Library in Brett Kelly Room B, April 29th, from 5:00 to 6:45 PM, open house style, to come and go as you please. Sorry, here's the typo. Additional information, please reach out to Wade Broadhead, Senior Planner with the City of Pueblo via 719-553-2280, or W-Broadhead, W-B-R-O-A-B-H-E-A-D at pueblo.us. And with that, I will turn it over to the Romeros.
Right. Thank you, Brian. Chair Gomez, Members of City Council, Mayor Graham. This report will be short. We are in the last 16 days of the legislative session. That's why I'm smiling a little bit more than than I was at the very beginning of this long 120-day session. Just to give you the scorecard, with 16 days remaining in the session, the House has introduced 332 bills and the Senate 299. Bring the total number of pieces of legislation under consideration to 631. Obviously, not all of those bills have made their way to the governor. In fact, a lot of bills are still both on second reading in the Senate and the House. But some things have been resolved. The state budget, a $43.9 billion budget, was sent to the governor today. We believe with a lot of hard work from a lot of people, K-12 was fully funded. Higher Education received $24 million new dollars, keeping tuition low. And we minimized the cuts to healthcare, especially where they relate to impact on the city. The two bills that we followed for the city this year involving the municipal court, Sample 62 was on the governor's desk. It's past 10 days. We have not seen anything on his website to indicate, you know, the status of that particular bill. We assumed that he let it become law without his signature. That one bill that he did not take a position on, that was a bill he said he didn't like, but they didn't take an official position on. 1147 is waiting for concurrence. That bill passed both the House and the Senate. Senate made some amendments, and it's just waiting for concurrence in the House. We believe that that bill is still going to be vetoed by the governor. As you know, he opposed the bill. He had his folks from the Department of Local Affairs testify against the bill. It was pretty clear without some significant amendments, which didn't occur, that the bill would be vetoed. So we'll see what happens once that bill actually gets to his desk. It's not there yet. Just to give you sort of as an aside, the one bill that the governor actually vetoed was the Open Records Bill. This bill made some fairly significant changes to the open records law, creating three separate categories. The governor vetoed that bill. If you've read the reports in the paper today, both in the House and the Senate, they feel like they have the votes to override that veto. Finally, the two bills that we're really following closely for the city right now is Senate Bill 276. That's the Protection of Civil Rights for Immigration Status. Among some of the provisions that the Colorado Municipal League and had concerns on behalf of all the cities were the penalty provisions of this bill. The bill prohibits courts, attorneys, and legal professionals from sharing personal information with federal immigration authorities, and expands the eligibility for vacating certain guilty pleas. The bill places a potential $50,000 penalty on public employees who violate the requirements of the bill. The bill was heard on Senate in the second reading on April 15th, where an amendment to remove reporting requirements for political subdivisions was added. That was one of the most significant issues for the Colorado Municipal League, but they still remain in the amend position, and as we try to work out more amendments on this particular bill. And then the one, I know that the city clerk is there, that we're also following is Senate Bill 1. That was, it was heard in House State Civic and Military Veterans Affairs on Monday, April 14th, and passed on a party line vote. The bill was amended in committee to reflect language crafted by the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association in partnership with CML that creates a more efficient process for clerks to adopt, to provide multilingual ballot access as required by the bill for cities over 3,000 population located in certain counties. The bill will now be moved to the House Appropriations Committee before being heard on the floor next week. So that's our report this week. We'll be wrapping up the session. As I said, in the next 16 days, we'll continue to follow and continue to lobby against House Bill 1147. Once it gets to the governor, we're obviously talking to his folks to recommend a veto of that bill. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Maestri, you have anything?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody else on council? Any other comments? Keel, I think we're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Chair Gomez.
Thank you. Next up, item B on the agenda is AMR Safety Jam. Chris McMahon, 15-minute presentation. Welcome, Mr. McMahon. Is your mic on?
Hello. Great to see you guys. It's Safety Jam time again. And see some new faces on council, so we want to come and talk to you guys about what we've been doing over the, geez, the last 13 years. We skipped a couple because of COVID, but this will be our 11th Annual Safety Jam. And I do have a video that I'm going to show you here in a few minutes that shows you what we built it into. But for everybody that may not be familiar with Safety Jam, AMR started this in 2013 with just an idea. We partnered with St. Mary Corwin and Parkview Hospital, and we also City Parks, which cannot tell you enough about City Parks. Steve and Mike Sexton and the guys at City Parks, phenomenal. They've taught me a lot about how to do events over the years, and they are just amazing. And the support they give us is great. But we started at City Park, kind of a little skateboard event, and giving away bicycles and skateboard helmets and bicycles. And that first year, we gave away about 180 helmets and 22 bicycles, if my memory serves correctly. And we had about 150 to 200 people that showed up. Our biggest year before COVID pulled the rug out from underneath us, we were right about 3,000 people, and we had 64 exhibitors. So over that eight years, you can see there was a tremendous amount of growth. Also, we've done this event in other cities, but I'm really proud that our Front Range, our Valley, has really looked at what Pueblo has done. We do this in Canyon City, American Medical Response. Canyon City does this in June as well. And last year, we had our first annual event in La Junta, which AMR functions serving the Valley in Rocky Ford, but we do it in La Junta. It's kind of the main city. And everybody looks at AMR Pueblo and the Safety Jam event here as the model of what to do. We've had the events in Cheyenne, Wyoming, in Atlanta, Georgia. And I know there's been some other events. Colorado Springs has had some. And they're looking at revisiting what we do here and expanding the Safety Jam event in other cities. We really appreciate you guys' support, and what I'd like to do is show a video. Again, we started with a couple of hundred people at the skate park. We kind of outgrew the skate park. After COVID, we did a couple of changes and a few different things. And Mike Sexton suggested we move to the Lake Menacaw Veterans Memorial Park. And so, Clyde, if you could go ahead and play that, I'd appreciate it. If you guys look at your monitor, this was some drone video of last year's event. So we grew, you can see there's a helicopter that went by there really quick. We had three helicopters, the Army National Guard from Colorado supporting the event. American Medical Response is partnered with UC Health, and we have Lifeline 5 there. And then also Lifeguard 4, St. Mary Corwin and Flight for Life have been great partners for years. Again, we love this park. It's really great. We can expand. As you see, we've partnered with our fire guys that we've been working with for decades. Great group of people. Pueblo County Sheriff's Office. We have Pueblo City PD. We've been a part of it since, really, since 2014. Fire Sheriff's Office and PD have been a part of this. Animal Control. You can see the Joint Bomb Squad there. The Fit Kids Program, they come out, they reached, I think he said they had over 200 kids that participated that he knew of that day. Randy Gradisher, great guy. He's come down for, this will be his 10th year coming down to sign autographs. You see the mega brain. That's just kind of cool. St. Mary Corwin brings that out. You can walk through that and get some education. Some statistics, bicycles. We've exceeded 600 bicycles that we have given away in the decade that we've been doing this. Over 400 skateboards, and we've given over 4,000 bicycle and skateboard helmets away, all free of charge. This event is free to the public. We partner with an amazing guy who's supported things in Pueblo for years, Dave Feimster. And we give away a free slice of pizza, and Pepsi-Cola sponsors with us, and we give away a bottle of pop. Nobody has to pay anything. The only thing that we've kicked around is we had some people say, "Where are the food trucks?" Food trucks aren't the thing anymore. That's just... So we're going to experiment with some food trucks, but we're still going to keep, for those folks that can't afford what they would get at a food truck, we want to have them something for them to eat. The whole thing with this event is this is different organizations, the Health Department, Public Community Health, obviously St. Mary Corwin, Parkview Hospitals, so many different organizations that are health-minded, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Civil Air Patrol, the Boys and Girls Club. This last year, we had 58 organizations that set up a tent and showed what Pueblo County has available for people who have different needs, and we make it fun. You know, we dangle a lot of carrots. We have the giveaway bicycles. We have the, you know, you can meet different Broncos. We've had different Broncos over the years, but Randy's been there for quite a few years straight. We also, we have a magician. Anybody that remembers Kyle Groves being a big part of the community, he still comes back, even though he's moved to Amarillo, he comes back for Safety Jam because it's just very important to him to still be a part of Pueblo and some of the different events, and he really enjoys the Safety Jam event. So we really, I've always come to you guys and asked for support, but also we realize, you know, sometimes, you know, budgets get tight. So we're going to forego our request for any monetary support this year, and just invite you guys to come participate. We'd really like you guys to come out, see the crowd, interact with the citizens. And then at noon, we have our presentation. We pick a hometown hero. Last year, Dave Feimster was our hometown hero. We do the National Anthem, and we'd like to have you guys address the crowd. You know, say hello, and then go around and visit with the citizens that come out and participate. And I say, we appreciate, over pretty much a decade, the support that the City of Pueblo and Pueblo City Council has given to Safety Jam, and we may be back requesting it again next year. But everybody's having a little bit of hard times with budgets, so we're going to make it happen without requesting money from you guys, but we still want your support by having you there.
Okay. Counsel, comments? Joe?
Chris, I've attended the event a number of times. It's an outstanding, well-organized, and very viable part of this community in terms of what you do for young people and for the people in general. So I support that 100%.
Councilman Flores.
Well, obviously, I support this 100%, always have. I think you guys do a great job. Since we're, this is being televised, could you tell everyone the date again, the time that it's held, and the day too, I think would help?
Absolutely. The Pueblo event will be June 7th. Again, at Lake Menacaw Veterans Memorial Park on the south side, right off of Pueblo Boulevard. Registration opens at 9:00. All of the booths will be open by 10:00, and then we quit at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in council? Good?
Thank you, Chris, for your organization and the program and putting this together every year.
Well, appreciate that. And again, I will probably send an email to one of the administrative assistants and get it out so we can get, if you're wanting to attend, I can get some details to you for times and location.
Yeah, Alyssa, she can, if you reach out to Alyssa, she can put it on the schedule.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, guys. Very much appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else?
Just to say, can we put that information on our web, on our webpage? We can. Okay.
Okay. I think we're good.
If you need any other information for your webpage, I could forward our logo or something that shows it's Safety Jam to you guys. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Next up, item Agenda C, Changes in Public Health and Safety Outcomes After Pueblo's Syringe Distribution Ban. Dr. Catherine Lemasters, Mr., I'm not even going to try, 15-minute presentation.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for welcoming us here. My name is Pranav Padmanabhan, and I'm a Masters of Public Health student studying epidemiology at the Colorado School of Public Health.
Hi, I'm Dr. Catherine Lemasters, and I'm a public health researcher and professor. Sorry, my common sense is poor. My name is Dr. Catherine Lemasters. I'm a public health researcher and professor at the University of Colorado Anschutz Medical Campus. My work is really based in community engagement and being sure that all communities are represented in our data and what we work on. And so I think that involves a lot of partnership with community organizations, and also that involves speaking to people in positions of power and city council members locally. So we got connected with Access Point Colorado through the Colorado Health Network last year after the temporary syringe ban. They wanted to know how it was impacting syringe litter, and one of the motivations for the ban and participation in their programs more broadly. I know there was a lot of discussion about the need for local data from Pueblo, so we're hoping we can present you with a bit of that. We're also hoping this can be a conversation for things, right, things we missed, things we can add into the data, other analyses people want to see, but hopefully, it's a first step in trying to understand the impacts of these programs and temporary closures might have on our communities. So we set out to do that. Also, other members of our team are Doctors Paul Kristine and Dr. Jarrett Peitel, both addiction medicine physicians, one of whom's family is from Pueblo. And Dr. Kristine is in the audience today. And he can answer clinical questions people might have about treating folks with addiction or other substance use needs. So today, I'm sorry, again, common sense here. Okay, sorry. So today, I'll walk through a bit of background, present the study, and then Pranav will present our findings and conclusion. And then, of course, feel free to ask us any questions that you have. So to set the stage here, we know that syringe service programs from a public health and medical perspective are part of a spectrum of many different options of community health services for people with addiction. Some of the services that they offer are providing and collecting syringes and participating in community cleanups of those syringes. And because they provide clean syringes, they're associated with large reductions of community spread of HIV and hepatitis C. And because they also pick up syringes on site and around community are often associated with reduced syringe litter in communities compared to those that don't have a program doing that. They also provide life-saving overdose reversal medications such as naloxone and connect people to other types of treatment, like substance use disorder treatment, housing, and other social services. And really, the crux of why they exist is that they reduce mortality for people who use drugs. So a timeline that I know you all know better than we do, but we'll just set a few dates to remind everyone. The data that we were able to access, again, because we were trying to do this kind of, you know, research is never real time. It takes a very long time. But as real time as possible, as we use data from January through September of last year. But to give the exact dates here, we used May 13th, which was the date of the syringe ban vote, as the first time point, and that went into effect on May 18th, and then was overturned on June 6th. We showed the kind of some news headlines here. Just to say that a small kind of asterisk, as we looked at that first change is when the vote took place, because a lot of work in public health shows that once something's publicized as changing, there might be a reduction in using, say, a syringe exchange provider, even if they're open for a couple more program days. But we looked at it both ways and didn't see a difference in our main findings. So just to note, if you see that date and it doesn't align with when the ban went into effect. So the data we have here comes from Access Point, one of the two syringe service programs here in Pueblo. And that data included participant IDs, demographic information, and services received from January through September of last year. And then we also used data from the Departments of Parks and Recreation to try to understand more of syringe litter, and we were able to track four weekly outcomes during this time. So the first was participation in the syringe service program. That was maybe a bit of a misnomer, so this includes any other services provided, like naloxone connecting to behavioral health services, accessing, you know, hygiene and food, things like that. Naloxone kits distributed, again, the life-saving medication for overdose reversal. Syringes distributed. Of course, we know this went to zero during the ban, but to see how that changed over time after was something that they were interested in. And then also public syringe litter collected, because we know that was a big concern for this community. And then to try to get how the ban impacted these four outcomes, we did something called Interrupted Time Series Analysis, which lets us compare trends before and after policy changes. I'll delve a little bit more into the method than I think would be, I would like to, just because you'll see some graphs, and so it could be helpful to see like what that's doing behind the scenes. But with each of the main findings, we'll provide a blurb of really the main takeaway. So don't feel like you need to get bogged down in this. We tried to take it out entirely, and then the graphs were even more confusing. So sorry about that. So for each of the graphs, you'll see the x-axis is time, right? So January through September of 2024. And then you'll see the outcome on the y-axis. So that will change, right, between participation in the program, et cetera. The interruptions here are going to be the dates that a change occurred. So when a policy was implemented, in our case, we have two interruptions, right? The date of the vote, and then the date that it was overturned, and the program started distributing syringes again. And so you'll see here, you'll have a line before that of what really happened, right? January through May of 2024 was exactly what happened before any change occurred. And then we'll have this kind of dash line, which is what, again, we don't know what happened. We don't know what would have happened had the ban not happened. So it is a projection, right? And then at each interruption, at each change of a policy, the model's looking for two things. The first is something that happened immediately. Maybe there was a huge, you know, increase or decrease in number of people going to Access Point for their other services at that time. What was the immediate change? And then the second is a change in trend, or outcomes could start going up more rapidly or more slowly than they did before, or going down more rapidly or more slowly. So it's capturing both of these things. So with every outcome, we're able to look at both. And then what's in green here, the difference in what would have happened had nothing occurred, again, based on a projection, the difference between that and what actually occurred is what we could potentially say is a policy effect, right? But these are looking at really trends over time. So now I will turn it over to Pranav to give us the results.
Thank you. Thank you. So to orient you to this first graph, again, on the x-axis, we have our date, which refers to weekly time periods between January and September 2024. On the y-axis, we have the weekly number of participants served. So the light gray line in the background represents our actual data that was collected. So these are weekly time points for the number of participants served by Access Point. The blue line represents the trend over that time period, and the gray shaded area represents our level of uncertainty. You can see that at the start of January 2024, there were around 210 participants served per week. Just before the ban was implemented on May 13th, there were around 248 per week. The red dotted line here represents the projected trend. So what we would have expected had the trends during the time before the ban was implemented continued into the future. And again, the blue line between the period of the ban and the period when the ban was overturned represents the actual trend over that time period. So we can see that between the time that the ban was implemented and the time that the ban was overturned, there was a sharp decrease in the number of participants served per week. And then finally, after the ban was overturned, we saw that there was an immediate jump in participants served per week, and then a continuing trend upward. And in September 2024, we saw that there were around 264 participants served per week. If the pre-ban trends had continued, we would have expected there to have been around 290 participants served per week. So we can see that in the three months following the ban being overturned, the number of participants didn't reach what we would have expected had pre-ban trends continued. And then we saw that overall, there were around 1,150 fewer participant visits in that total time period from the ban onward than we would have expected. Next, looking at the number of life-saving naloxone kits distributed. We saw similar trends in the pre-ban period. We saw that there were around 116 naloxone kits distributed per week in January, moving up to around 145 in May. After the ban was implemented, we saw a sharp decrease. And then, once again, we saw an immediate jump in naloxone kits distributed, and then an ongoing upward trend. And again, we saw that the number of naloxone kits distributed in September didn't reach the number of kits we would have expected there to have been distributed had pre-ban trends continued. And in total, there were around 900 fewer kits distributed compared to expected trends. And then similarly, looking at syringes distributed, we saw that there was a flat trend prior to the ban being implemented, with around 9,000 syringes being given out per week. Between the period of the ban and the ban being overturned, we saw a sharp decrease in syringes being distributed. It went down to zero after that first week. And then after the ban was overturned, we again saw an immediate increase, but we actually ended up seeing an increase in syringes distributed per week that was actually above what was happening before the ban was implemented, as well as what we would have expected. So in September 2024, there were around 15,000 syringes being distributed per week. And overall, when we consider that period from the ban onward, considering both the decrease in syringes after the ban, as well as the increase after the ban was overturned, we saw that there were around 3,400 more syringes distributed than we would have expected. And then our fourth outcome is looking at discarded syringes collected. So we saw a flat trend once again prior to the ban being implemented. However, I did want to point out that there was a sharp increase in one week prior to the ban. After the ban was implemented, we saw an immediate decrease in the number of public syringe litter After the ban was implemented, we saw an immediate decrease in the number of public syringe litter that was collected. And this continued onward after the ban was overturned. So at the beginning of the period, we saw around 200 syringes being collected per week, and this went on to 97 per week. However, looking at that shaded gray area, which again represents our uncertainty, we saw that this was very close to the dotted red line, meaning that the number of syringes that were collected per week towards the end of the ban was very similar to what we would have expected when we were considering that uncertainty. And then overall, we saw around 2,000 fewer discarded syringes in that entire time period after the ban than we would have expected. And then finally, in conclusion, we saw that both naloxone distribution, as well as SSP participation, decreased after the ban was implemented and did not go back up to expected levels even after the ban, three months after the ban was overturned. So again, this is concerning because naloxone is a life-saving overdose reversal medication. And SSP participation is concerning because SSPs are where people can access discarded syringe pickup. They also offer HIV and Hep C testing, as well as access to addiction treatment, as well as other connections to services such as housing services. So when we saw that there was an overall decrease in SSP participation, this very likely could have led to people accessing fewer of those other medical services. We saw that both of these outcomes did not return to expected levels in the three months after the ban was reversed. We also saw that syringe litter may have decreased after the ban. However, there are a couple of points I wanted to highlight regarding this finding. One is that SSP community cleanups continued during this period. So while syringes were not being distributed, there were continuing to be efforts for the SSP to go out to the community and pick up those discarded syringes. We also saw that although syringe distribution went back up after that ban was overturned, we did not see a corresponding increase in syringe litter. So prior to the ban, we saw that very few of the syringes that were distributed by the SSP were actually being littered into the community. Between the vote and the overturn, we saw a very similar ratio of discarded syringes collected versus syringes distributed. And then after the ban was overturned, we actually saw fewer discarded syringes per syringes distributed by the SSP. And finally, we wanted to point out that SSPs are part of the larger system of public health and safety. And in addition to providing all of these health services that were mentioned, they also prevent hospitalizations. They lower visits to the ER, connect individuals to treatment, and save communities money. So restricting their activities may have unintended negative consequences on other parts of the health continuum. And again, our takeaway is that syringe service programs are essential healthcare services, and bans on syringe distribution can have unintended spillover effects that harm life-saving public health efforts, including efforts to provide naloxone connections to treatment and other public health efforts. And feel free to scan this QR code for a detailed flyer with all of these findings. And here is our contact information, and we are very happy to take questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Councilor Flores.
This information is really valuable. You know, one of the strongest arguments for having syringe exchange programs like this is the the potential or the actual eliminating an exposure to HIV or to hepatitis. Is there is there any way? It's a hard ask, I guess, to figure out what you would estimate. You know, how how much of a reduction that really is? How how many people, based on your analysis, can we say did not get HIV or didn't get, you know, the hepatitis disease as a result of this program? I don't know if there's another study that might correlate to the amount of people that you see versus the amount of people that actually get sick because they don't have access to syringe exchange. Did my question make sense?
Yes, yeah, thank you for that question. So based on our study in Pueblo data, we currently did not evaluate outcomes of HIV and hepatitis C. That's certainly something that we would be interested in looking at if the data were available. Based on other studies, we estimate that the reduction in HIV and Hep C is around 50% after a syringe service program is implemented.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, that because it was right, the short ban, and we haven't had a ton of time since then, we might need a little bit more time because we know incidents in this community of HIV and Hep C is relatively low, as well as things like fatal overdoses. Those are all outcomes we'd really want to look at. But we'd need a little bit more more of a time window of data, at least through the end of the year, which we could now go back to. And we're working with CDPHG, right, the State Health Department, to get some more data to make this more robust. So we'd be happy to try to try to add that and to be sure it's all relevant to, you know, specific to this community.
Your left, please.
Yeah, that, I mean, this is all interesting information, and I know that you're a study is only as good as the information that you're given to be able to put in. And and did you deal with the administration as far as when they were doing their cleanups? How many syringes they were picking up, anything like that?
Yeah, so the data on the syringe litter comes from Pueblo Parks and Rec Department. So we submitted requests to get the data from from the Pueblo Parks and Rec Department.
But I guess I'd ask you, Mayor Graham, did anybody contact you?
Nobody contacted me directly, but we have several different teams cleaning up, not just Parks and Recs. We have community service, team up to clean up. The DICE team is out there. So there's it's not just Parks Department that is out there cleaning up syringes.
So we could certainly add add that reach out for that data and just update this that, again, this is we apologize, we didn't reach out to all of those teams. But again, this is meant to be preliminary. So we're happy to add that and rerun things to see if, yeah.
Yeah, because the data the data shows that there's very little discard, but the reality is there's still tremendous amount of discard. And anytime we go into these areas that 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 are very much inhabited by the people who use drugs. I mean, they 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 still just leave them everywhere. It's just it's just a mess. But the the so I question the information when it comes to the to, you know, that the the litter is gone down. I don't believe it. But that's just an opinion. I don't have any data to to tell you any other way. But the other thing that's very interesting, because when we were talking about the the ordinance that went into place in May, and we had very spirited conversations back and forth with the with the the public, the with Access Point and city council. And I had gone to the Department of Health through the Pueblo Department of Health and received the information which, and I wish I had it with me today, but I don't, which showed the infectious disease caused by by needle use pre-access point, after access point. And it was really interesting. And when I shared that up here, that the instance of these infectious diseases, and I don't necessarily think it was just HIV, but it was hepatitis C and some other things, actually increased that you can look at the dates and and it just went higher and higher and higher every year. But yet we kept hearing the arguments that it that that, you know, it'll go lower, it should reduce it. You just said that, you know, it should be 50% less. So what would you attest? Or I mean, what would you contribute to it being 50% higher in Pueblo?
Yeah, I think some of it, and I would need the exact date, the access point open, but I know it was in the midst of the opioid crisis, where we're just seeing a lot more injection drug use, right? And fentanyl and other drugs coming on the market. So I think a lot of it has to do with, right, there's more folks who are using and these services trying to come in to combat that. But I think that speaks to the point of trying to add to the earlier point of HIV and Hep C acquisition during this time and in this year to try to see if we do see any changes when it was shut down versus when it was open to kind of isolate that within like historical time, right, of the opioid crisis.
I mean, it was literally shut down for three weeks. There's not just a tremendous, I don't know how, if there can be a tremendous amount of data that can be gleaned from a here's when the ban took place, and three weeks later it was gone. And maybe I'm wrong on the dates. Maybe it was two weeks. Maybe maybe it was four weeks, but it was a very short period of time. And anyway, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud based upon the presentation that that you know, I'll still say, I don't think under any circumstances, it's good for the community. I get the arguments and and I get the data that we see sometimes. Sometimes you wonder if the data, again, that the data is only as good as the information that was given to you. And did you do an exhaustive search of of all the data? And you know, you do so much, you send an email, and this is what you got. So I understand that. Thank you for for the report.
Yeah, thank you. And if there's more, yeah, data we can add, we're we're happy to. But yeah, thank you.
I'm going to jump in here real quick. I've been following this issue real quick. And in some of the data I've gotten, 2019, we had eight, excuse me, 800 overdose deaths. In 2020, it jumped to 1,477, a 40% increase. In 20, excuse me, in 2023, it jumped to 1,881. We don't have the stats in for 2024 yet. But in reference to Hep C and HIV, they have done a good job, and that has been a reduction. But I don't think you can hang your hat on the overdose deaths. It's just not there. So just just running that, I'm not trying to, I would like to see the everybody do well on this thing. But right now, that side of the aisle ain't happening. A council maestra, go ahead. Councilwoman Martinez. Councilwoman Martinez.
Clyde, can you run the the slides real quick too, while she's speaking?
Well, I really appreciate the data and the presentation and all of the hard work that went into this. You know, I I didn't vote for the ban because I I know that there's substantial research, not only in Colorado, but across the nation and the globe, that shows that syringe service providers limit and prevent communicable disease. And I think it's really hard to argue with with data. I understand the argument that it's, you know, only in a certain timeframe. However, what I find most interesting about this data, that I'm curious if you can speak about, is the substantial increase of syringes that were given out after the ban was overturned. Is am I am I understanding it correctly that the ban almost had an opposite effect where SSPs were giving out more syringes after the ban?
That is what we saw. I think it is very plausible that in that period of time, people were not accessing syringes, and then there could have been an increase in demand following the overturn of the ban.
Yeah, potentially, we know. And I think to add to this, right, would be interviewing folks who use who use the services, which was not something we're able to do to better understand how that changed there. The behaviors and mentality, I know some of it from from Access Point was that people, right, were kind of hoarding the syringes they had and reusing them during that time, unfortunately. But then there was maybe this fear that this would go away again in the future. So people kind of trying to get more syringes so that they would have clean supplies if this happened again, that uncertainty. I think of what we know, again, trying to really speak to Pueblo data and local data being important. But what we see in other communities, including in Denver, is when the when the laws or legislations changing rapidly, right, with this community, it's very confusing often, and there's often this kind of chilling, right, chilling effect before it goes into effect. And really uncertainty of what will happen in the future that could have led to that. But I think it'd be important to make this more robust, to talk to talk to some folks using the services to kind of match. I think it's always most helpful when we kind of can marry quantitative data with more qualitative work. So hopefully that's something.
Are you planning on doing that as your next steps?
We.
Doing qualitative data?
We can talk with, be open to it. It was, again, with this, we didn't have a clear next step. It was kind of presenting to you all and seeing what made sense. But that's certainly something we could. Yeah, and then another faculty member, Dr. Nicole Wagner, who works some, you know, with SCARA and has done a lot of interviews with with folks in the community. So we could talk with her to see if.
Yeah, I just it's, I I just think it's super ironic that the one of the main points of the ordinance was to try and reduce the amount of needles, you know, in the community. And it's, I mean, it increased the amount of needles exponentially because it was overturned. So it had the exact opposite effect.
Councilman Flores.
This has always been a medical issue to me, not so much a syringe kind of focus. And, you know, one of the things that we discovered, or I discovered in my own research, knowing that you were going to be here tonight, is that there is a, it's been 30 years that this has been studied. It wasn't just yesterday, and you're not the first to do this. But this is actually data that CDC has on a national basis that this really works. And 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 so if it was just the needle question, some of the some of this would be, you know, questionable, I guess, and it would be benign. But what happens when they can't get the needles, they also they also skip all the other services that are available. And the naloxone and all the other services that are available, they completely just go into to the dark and and just forget about the other services that are available. So I think I think that's a big factor, too. I, at one time, when I worked, I I used to deal with, I used to write medical malpractice coverage. And I remember talking to one plastic surgeon that was telling me that, you know, even though it wasn't hepatitis or it wasn't HIV, that some of the infections that people get from the use of needles, he saw strains of infection that he'd never seen before. I mean, so, you know, it it was really the focus should have been on trying to get these people off. And by eliminating this and their elimination of all the other services are available, you know, there's not only HIV and hepatitis, there's so many other infections. But the whole purpose of this is to try to get them off of drugs, which is ironic. But anyway, thank you for the information. It was very valuable to me.
President Mio.
Yeah, I I just want to question the data one more time. I mean, that's what the gist of the meeting is, is about the data in the presentation. And Councilor Martinez brought up a good point, because I saw the same thing that she saw. I'm like, oh, my goodness, look at, can you go to that, go past a couple till you go on? The needles distributed? There you go. Another one. Yeah, from 9,000 a week to 15,200 a week. But what I find interesting, because again, all of us were involved from the very beginning, is that this this information came specifically from Access Point, right? So when Access Point was here in front of city council prior to a ban, they had no idea how many needles they gave out. So, I mean, if they didn't know how many needles they gave out pre-ordinance, now, all of a sudden, there's, we have numbers that it was 9,000 a week. Is that just a guess? Or did they actually, did they have receipts and stuff that says that we did 9,000 a week? And now we're at 15,000 a week? And then you have to wonder as a counselor, all the times we were asking the questions prior to May, how many needles do you give out a week or a year or or a month? They had no answer for. So again, it just brings up the question about when you're talking about the data that goes into the study or into this presentation is you know, that just makes me want to question how accurate the information you were given.
Sure.
Does it jive with what we were getting? So is it really up to over from 9,000 to 15,000? Or has it always been 15,000?
Sure. No, I think that's a good question and something we learn a lot is right to question, question our data and how good the data are, right, when we're working with people. Data is always messy. But one thing I will say, and I should certainly can't speak to their data collection processes over time. But what I can say is I think having Pranav and a master's student really dedicated to this allowed us, right, when service providers are really strapped thin, and they have right, when service providers um, are really strapped thin and they had all of this data that had not been cleaned, um, that we were able to then go through and say, we're asking this question, we can organize it by week. Um, and so there was a lot of data that just hadn't been able to be looked at before. I think, um, when, you know, they're very busy serving this population, is the most I can speak to on that. But we did do a lot of data cleaning and going through and organizing it over time.
Okay, Councilor Maestra.
Well, like, what's the number one point? Because I keep hearing needle exchange. We've had access point in front of us and they have admittedly said, because that's what we've asked them, is what's the problem with the exchange? Well, their grant funding doesn't allow them to insist on an actual exchange for the needles. I do remember them saying that. So let's just, the whole, I know we tried to put exchange out there, but exchange doesn't mean anything in these cases because they're not practicing it. They've self-admitted to not practicing an exchange um, and requiring that. And so the other thing too is um, AIDS and hepatitis C are also sexually transmitted diseases, correct? So when we are the second highest, uh, we've since twenty eighteen, syphilis has increased in this state significantly, significantly. So as we're trying to, which they also test for syphilis within the facilities too. So what I'm saying is, is really is there a true prevent, how do you, how do you track that data? To say that the needle exchange is um, actually helping reduce hepatitis C and um, AIDS. When we see an increase in syphilis and yet they're all sexually transmitted diseases. Okay? The other thing is, is that what I did notice here is really actually everything increased throughout the year, not only the participants, but the distribution. So you have the participants and the distribution. And I just think there was um, the right data wasn't collected as far as um, the syringe litter. I don't think that was fully collected. Um, and so what we have here is not a um, situation where council put out a ban and so therefore we have more usage or more distribution of needles. It's just that we have a huge drug problem here in this city. And um, this whole, whole community suffers from those repercussions of the addiction that goes on in this community. And syringe litter is a big issue for this community. And so I'm not um, I'm not comfortable in saying that we need to have this to prevent, to prevent um, HIV and hepatitis C when it's a sexually transmitted disease. So if they're getting, if they're at this point, what's pointing is a clean needle if we've got such an increase in syphilis in this state.
Yeah, thank you. The, I don't think I'll get at everything, but let me know if I missed something. Um, I think some parts of the piece with syphilis and what is working in, in this city or isn't, and over time, the one thing just I'll note to more data is that when we're working with CDPH, we're getting access to more data around these different STIs and other diseases. Um, and from other um, syringe service providers across the state. So I think part of, especially what was said earlier about this increase over ten years, but access point came in, but it is opioid crisis. So we're seeing this across areas. Our next step is to kind of combine the data throughout different cities. When we're able to compare who has different services, who have different things going on to make a better comparison than just over time within one location, um, to try to get at um, more of that. And then I do think to the litter piece, we'll certainly reach out to the mayor's office to um, add more data to that. You know, syringe litter is notoriously hard to get accurately, right? Because that's all over a city. There's different um, organizations collecting it. People will do neighborhood, right, walkthroughs. Um, there's things you're going to see big jumps when there's a, a sweep of a homeless um, encampment, of course. So there's a lot of pieces there, but um, I think there's.
There's also this to consider. Um, these organizations get paid off of per needle is what, something we also learned. And so if they reduce giving out the needles, then they're reducing, and maybe that's why they've increased from nine thousand a week to fifteen thousand point two hundred for those actual times lost to make up for that lost revenue of not. Did you guys ask that question?
Think with this, again, when it's over time, I, again, they could speak better to how many syringes each participant can get, you know, at one time, but there is some set piece there. So I know it is given out to the number of participants coming to their, to their walkout site. But um, that's all we can, can say to that, but we can ask more and get the numbers. You know, how frequently people can come and what the maximum is, and if that's different when they do provide used needles, we could get more information on that certainly. Um, but I'll note that for, for.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do an accurate study, I would think that you would kind of take that. I don't know, because to me, when you're getting the data from all of them, it's like the fox, the, the saying, the fox is being in charge of the hen house on the data. And so um, you know, how seriously do, can those receiving the data take it when it's under those, I don't know if there's another way to collect data through third party. Um, but that would probably uh, sit more accurate with us because these people's business is based off of their amount of distribution of needles. And so their grant funding and so forth. But thank you for coming today.
Yeah, thank you. And we can speak to CDPH about what we're able to get through them um, as well.
Okay.
President O'Neill.
I just wanted to say, thank goodness we're not the peer review panel, right?
Councilor Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I'm a numbers guy, so good work on breaking down this stuff. Um, you know, whether it's something I agree with or not. Um, I don't think you're ever going to get an accurate representation on return rates because I know as a business owner, when I had, um, you know, problems right outside my back door, I was cleaning up needles on the regular. I know people are cleaning up their neighborhoods or their businesses on the regular. Um, I think more so a better way to look at it would be uh, uh, number of needles that were given out compared to number of needles they actually collected to give you a better return rate, because I can almost guarantee that it's not only one out of every ten that is not being returned based on the numbers from all the different people that have done cleanups. It just seems like there's vast amounts of litter being left around. And um, you know, I guess it does prevent some spread of diseases, people are saying, but if somebody that uh, is cleaning these needles up happens to get in contact with them in the wrong ways, then it could be spread to somebody that it never should have been in the first place. But uh, it's nothing on you guys. It's people running the programs, but uh, that's just my opinions on it.
Councilor Maestra. Okay. And anybody else on the dice? Okay, guys. Well, I appreciate the presentation. I think we're done. Anything else? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up. All right, agenda D, city council budget goes, goals, excuse me, Mark Alaf, president, fifteen minute presentation.
Well, this shouldn't take fifteen minutes, but thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a continuation off of the uh, uh, retreat when we talked about uh, we pulled it off of the retreat because we had too much stuff going on. So I had made the comment and said early on that I've always felt that council should be very proactive and, and very much involved in the, in the process when it comes to budgeting. And I felt that it was in the best interest of the city council to share with the administration what their goals were as far as the twenty twenty six budget. And I'm not talking specific goals of, of I want, you know, forty dollars to go to this or thirty dollars to go to that, because that comes when the markup sessions come. But I think it's, it's, it's only fair to the administration that we decide what it is that we expect out of the twenty twenty six budget. Whether it's a, whether it's a reduction in expenses, whether it's an increase in, in expenses, whether it's uh, whatever that may be. But I think as a group, we should come to some consensus of what we expect to happen come the twenty twenty six budget. You know, it's unfortunate that, that every year, October, August, September, uh, we start looking at it and, and everything's pretty much set in stone. And there's very little that, that, that you can change or very little input without causing major major angst, uh, especially among department heads and, and the administration. It is our, our ultimate responsibility as a city council and our fiduciary duty as city counselors that we're responsible for passing a budget that, that, that you believe your constituents uh, are, are, are very much in favor of. So all I'm asking and all I'm suggesting in this process is that everybody's been involved in the budget process. Everybody up here, and if you have any expectations, and I think we need to talk it out and, and share that with the mayor and the finance director and, and let that move forward. So I'll open it up to whoever wants to talk about uh, whatever they think uh, a direction we should take.
Well, some of the stuff that I've been looking at in trying to find data and doing my own research, um, the best that I could come up with, with a hundred seventeen million dollars and then uh, twenty million reserves and eight point six of that or eight point five of that being absorbed. They're suggesting a two-year program and a budget cuts uh, to departments by at least seven point six percent. But that's not counting in all the other things, the buying of the PBR building, the buy of the Dittmer building, the buy uh, the boathouse, all this other stuff hasn't been filtered in. And if you break it down to three years, it goes down about five percent. Go to, uh, I believe it's four years, it's closer to four percent. And I've got those data, so I can get that numbers to Dan if you need some. But my concern is, I think you're probably closer, if we put all the numbers together, I think you're probably closer in between twelve and fifteen percent of budget cuts. That's my opinion. I think I'm entitled to that. And I'll present whatever I've, research I've got, and I'll give it to Mr. Nun, so he can take a look at it. But that's how I see it. I think we're in serious trouble and I think we've got to look at budget cuts of the departments.
Anybody else? And then Councilor Forrest.
Yeah, my, my, uh, my concern is uh, you know, right now what's going on, you know, with the stock market, it, it all centers around the uncertainty of, of what's happening here. And I think we have the same kind of problem here is the uncertainty of what kind of revenue we're going to see. And that's going to be the toughest part of this whole thing. Uh, it would be nice to be able to say, gee, we're having such a fantastic year. We're going to have ten percent increase in sales tax. But it hasn't been going that way. It looks like we've been uh, in the negative for the first three months of the year. So I'm going to uh, you know, as we move along the year, I think looking at our revenue uh, is going to be so important uh, because that ultimately is going to be the uh, the foundation for any changes that we want to do or any, anything that we want to do extra. Or even looking at budget cuts if that's what's necessary. But I'll be focused a lot on revenue and sales tax uh, numbers. Uh, at least for the next three months to see whether or not the trend will reverse itself. Because I think as, am I right, Mayor, that we're probably close to five percent ne- in the negative from last year, same, same month, year to date.
Oh, you were eleven percent down.
But that was for one month.
Yeah. So January was up one point one and February was down eleven. So you don't, we don't have Marches.
We don't have March yet. Okay, for some reason I thought. So it's definitely going in the wrong direction.
It is.
Yeah.
It's really hard to make a good estimate though, just on a couple of months. It's better if we take it by the quarter, um, because you have some businesses that don't pay their sales tax every month.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, some businesses that pay a large lump sum. So it's really best if we wait a couple of months and then see what it looks like just for trends, because uh, increase, you know, point one and then a decrease in point eleven. That's a, that's a very large swing. Um, it is, it's very volatile.
Thank you. Thanks.
Councilor Maestra.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but Dittmer's paid for, correct?
Correct. So uh, several years ago, when the previous administration went to purchase the Wells Fargo building, they had set four million dollars aside in a capital improvement um, project. So we used one point two million dollars. So that's not having an effect on last year's budget or this year's budget.
That was already paid for out of.
Yep. And then um, in regards to Councilor Gomez's uh, boathouse, the city of Pueblo only paid uh, one million dollars for boathouse out of general fund from last year. And it was the match to the other million dollar grant. So we ran the hole for a million dollars on a sixteen million dollar project. And then in regards to the PBR building, that's again, another capital asset that we're taking a COP um, with a payment every single year.
Yeah. So the PBR building upon um, the close acquisition of that, that would be a priority in any budget moving forward because it is a capital asset.
Capital asset, yeah.
Yes. And so.
Debt service, just like the three fire stations are, we make a yearly payment on the three stations. So that's.
Like the police department was in the past and everything that we have um, has at some point been, um, and it should be, those are the things that should be priority in any budget. Um, the the, the hard part is the revenue. You know, we're not just, we're, you know, we don't know if we're going to be able to get revenue, much less even maintain the revenue that we have been getting in the past because of the economy and so forth. And maybe this is the year rather than to um, rather than to um, run it out, the reserves. Maybe this is the year that we need to really take a hard look and make even more um, cuts than we did last year. And, and, you know, I know that the public's real big, um, when it comes to the um, nonprofits and, you know, there's got, just got to be an understanding of the priority of those in the charter, which there really isn't a priority for them. And with us um, acquiring the homeless shelter, we are, you know, we're taking it. And then we have assets that we're kind of like, you know, drowning in because they're not producing to keep themselves going. Um, and so there's a lot to look at, you know, what we're going to keep and what we're not going to keep and, and reducing that because if we do ask, um, if we do have ballot measures out there asking the people for taxes, we have to show them on our end. And maybe we should accelerate that so that before that ballot initiative, that election is due, that we've shown progress in making those cuts and prioritizing in that budget and cutting out what we can. And it's just, you know, it's a, it's just a cold, hard fact across this nation. Every, we're not the only community having to do that at this time, unfortunately. So that's what I would like to see. I would like to see us with a balanced budget. I would like us to see us prioritizing our capital assets, um, our city maintenance, our um, infrastructure um, and um, infrastructure improvements and so forth. And really um, before we start asking the people to help supplement that. So that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Councilor Boston.
Thank you, President Alaf. Um, yeah, I think everybody wants a balanced budget. Um, it's just the, how we're going to get there is the hard part. Um, obviously, it could be to the point where some cuts are needed. Um, but I agree, or we take a look at trying to ask anybody for anything more, I think we need to try to look at ways of increasing revenue. Um, getting people to spend money in Pueblo, stay in Pueblo, um, increasing economic development, uh, such as what I recommended with trying to find new ways to help with like the Boulevard project, for instance, you know, trying to get more construction going there, more businesses there, just more sales tax here in town. Um, I know we kicked the can around a little bit about the idea of maybe repurposing the absent sales tax uh, for other options. Maybe even to use it for a capital improvement instead of what it's being used for currently. Um, but uh, you know, I think these are all different things to consider for sure. But uh, yeah, I think it takes uh, us showing our due diligence of us trying to make as many cuts as we can, funding the priority, funding things, like if we can't afford to fund certain things, we shouldn't be doing it. Um, certain things were tied into, whether that be, um, you know, contracts or things like that, but uh, contracts or things like that. But uh, I, yeah, I think we need to try to find more revenue sources and try to make as many cuts as we can before we, you know, go to asking the people. But yeah, as Dennis said, we do need to wait and see how things are going to go for this year, but currently the trend is not looking good, so.
Councillor Martinez.
Thank you. Two things. One, I just want to note that, um, you know, in in all of my years on council, we've made cuts the whole time. There has never been a budget where a department director submitted their budget for the year and they were a hundred percent funded. Um, I know that last year, all of the the department directors submitted budgets and they were um really um taken with a grain of salt with efficiencies in mind and effectiveness. And so I I wanted to note that that our department directors do a great job in submitting requests and then working with what they're given. So this isn't going to be the first time that we're doing budget cuts. Um, I also want to note that one of the things I'm most excited for this year is to see the contract process for our um, not our non-departmentals, but our um, you know, some of the the other contracts that we have. I know that that's a new process that we are rolling out um with your administration, Mayor, and and I I'm really excited for that because I think that that's going to help our partners like the zoo and the um, you know, the other contracts that we have, like the Humane Society, to have um a better way to have, to to know what their revenue is going to be over a multi-year thing. So that's one thing that I'd like to have a work session around. Not anytime soon, but some, you know, so sometimes when those contracts are made, um, just to have a conversation around it. I also, in a perfect world, if I had a magic wand, I would sell the Pope Block Building. Marissa can move all of her stuff first.
Councillor Maestri.
Um, I think we did make departmental budgets um uh cuts. But let's not forget that we amended the previous mayor's budget by several thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to increase gives to non-departmentals. So, and we were still in a deficit in each one of those budgets of ten million plus on the pre- with the previous mayor. But each time he brought, he brought uh an also uh budget to us that was ten plus million over. And then this council made the recommendation to increase non-departmentals by a hundred thousand plus each time. So so we're not really, um, when we're doing that, we're not really being as responsible as we need to be. We just need to be prioritize more and be more responsible in spending uh the public do- the public tax dollars. And so um, I just want to um, our departments, of course, are going to have to take cuts, but they should not be taking cuts before non-departmentals. And um what else would we call it? The donations that we give. They should never in this, at this level of government, take um, neither one of those should ever take priority under over our departments. Um, that's what municipal government is created for. It is created to maintain and to serve this city.
Councillor Forrest?
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of comments. Number one, uh, you know, one way to look at a a responsible government like ours is to look at our surplus. And I want to make sure that I go on the record, in the last seventeen years, uh, we've only had one other year that was better than the one last year when we established our budget. We had a twenty-two, we have a twenty-two million dollar surplus. Uh, that means that that money is set aside for a rainy day. There was one year, uh, about three or four years ago, that was twenty-six million. So, I mean, we, from that standpoint, looking at our budget from that standpoint, uh, we've been very responsible and that we have, um, you know, that amount of a surplus to fall back on uh in the in the event of a real catastrophe this year. And that's a reality. I I hadn't intended on talking on this PBR building, but I've had several calls from people indicating that they thought that that was, uh, we that we shouldn't have done that. But I want to, I I want to give you guys some numbers that are going to blow you away. Uh, I'm all for purchasing uh the PBR building. And the architect that built this is a good friend of mine. And I think, I don't know, are we talking about fifteen or eighteen years ago when that building was up? Somewhere in that range. He was telling me when that building was constructed and it was built, it cost the city thirteen uh thirteen million five hundred thousand. Uh, the the square footage is forty-four thousand in this building. He says in today's dollars, it it would cost twenty-two million dollars to build that building with the amount of square footage. And I says, well, wouldn't you discount the basement? He said the basement is going to cost as much, it costs as much, even though it's hollowed out because they had to extend the elevator down to the the bottom level. And they also have retrofitted that thing for a restaurant. So everything's ready to go in there. So he said the cost uh was probably uh uh nowadays would be uh closer to, I think I wrote that down. Yeah, the the difference be, so if we wanted, the city wanted to buy this, uh, wanted to buy and then the land obviously was ours to begin with. But if we we were to go someplace else where we'd have to buy land, we would be looking at twenty-two million dollars. We got one hell of a deal, I think, on the PBR building and uh you know, at at seven million, uh, we couldn't even build uh a third of that, uh, that building right now with that amount of money. So I just wanted to to bring that up, and that's a capital expenditure. So that's not an ongoing expenditure. Uh, the the uh the the paying back, the cot bonds will be a continuing, but it's you don't look at the amount that we're going to pay for it, you look at the amount that we'll be responsible on an annual basis. So I I just wanted to, since we were talking about the PBR building, I wanted to say that.
Councillor Martinez.
How much are the COPs? Can you remind me, Mayor? This the COP for the PBR building?
The total?
Yeah, or the um payment that we'll have to have?
I think the first payment is five seventy-five, and it goes all the way up to eight hundred thousand near the fifteen-year mark.
Okay, and it's an annual payment?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
What's the taxable value of the PBR building location?
Well, there'll be no taxable value once the city owns it, but I think it's about a hundred and forty thousand a year they pay right now.
Okay, and the and the, when you go to the assessor's site and you look up the value of the property, and they're saying the value would be five million, that's what I saw last, and I don't know if that's changed. The last time I saw it, is that true?
I I don't know, I'd have to look and see.
Just curious, I saw it, I was just wondering.
Well, assessed value is always lower than market value.
Yeah, they said, yeah, but I think by said, they said by twenty percent, wasn't it? I'm not sure, I'm just trying to figure it out.
It just depends.
Okay.
It just, it just depends out there. I've seen assessed values lower than um, you know, market real estate all the time. And so that that's just, it, I'm going to tell you, the um, we wouldn't be receiving the financing on it if it was not, if they couldn't value it at what we paid for it. They have to pull an appraisal for that. The banks of any time that you go and you get any kind of financing, an appraisal has to come into play.
All right.
Recent ones.
Uh, let's get back on task here. I know we're going down a bunch of rabbit holes right now, and you know, there's a basketball game tonight.
You know, this is.
And I know Regina doesn't have anywhere to go, so.
This is the time where councillor gets to come and sit.
Here's what the, here's what the deal is. The deal is, and the only reason that that we brought this up and we wanted to talk about it is, is that, is that in November or October or September, when you see the budget, you need to decide what it is that's tolerable to you because there's going to be a deficiency. So what is that deficiency? Do you want a zero deficiency? Do you want, are we okay with uh uh ten million dollar deficiencies and and uh using the fund balance? Are you okay with all that stuff? I mean, it's all a good question. Because I know that every time we get the first book, everybody goes, oh, my gosh. I can't believe this, I can't believe this. What are we going to do about this? Well, it's a little late to do anything about it when you're not discussing these things upfront and uh, you know, I guess we always come for I'll say my piece is that you always come from a a perspective, in my opinion, that you should run the government no different than you run your household. And the way that other people run their households, our constituents that 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 pay their taxes and so on, you know, if they have a savings account, they can only borrow from the savings account for so long. If their income stays stagnant, if they're uh sooner or later, you're going to run out of savings, and then what are you going to do? I'm not saying that we're ready to run out of our savings and and uh all heck's going to break out because we're not being very proactive in it. But the reality is, is if say everything stayed even, if everything stayed even, you'd be at another eight million dollar deficiency. And if you were at an eight million dollar deficiency, we'll drop the fund balance another eight million dollars if it stayed even. If you have a loss, let's say that sales tax goes down five percent, ten percent, nobody knows. Because that's a great point, we don't have the revenue, we don't, we we're we're literally guessing on on where's, where it's going to be. Uh, but assuming that uh it's going to stay stagnant, at least for this year, you're literally looking at an eight to ten million dollar deficiency coming in tw- in twenty twenty-six. And you know, is councillor good with that? That's the question. And and uh if you are, it gives uh the administration, and I do, where you stand on that. And if nobody wants to make that stand, that's fine. Councillor uh Gomez?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, councillor Boston.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, you know, trying to run it more like a household budget. Um, but uh, you know, I think we got to set some realistic goals. I think that eventually the goal would be to be a zero balance budget, but to try to find eight million or eight and a half, ten million in a year uh might not be uh doable. And if I'm not mistaken, are we budgeting this budget for next year on a guestimate that our sales tax is not increasing?
Zero increase, flat.
Okay, so we are, and we already made a lot of cuts last year. I know that uh uh they they will continue to do that. They're finding anywhere and everywhere to trim and trying to save as much as we can, but there's always more to do. Do you want to chime in on?
Uh, I was just gonna, I mean, so you, your last year budget for this year that you approved was eight point six million in the hole, and you need to add on the wages that you're going to see for twenty twenty-six for the three contracts. So you're going to be above ten million dollars, uh, just based off the information that we know, once the wages compound. So you're going to look over ten million. But I I wanted to tell you that we've been working on putting a presentation together for council. Um, operating is something that we can cut back ten to fifteen percent, and that's something that we can do with just the directors and and trying to find out um where those dollars are being spent and what we can cut back. What I can't come back, cut back on is employees without cutting all part-time people. So I have asked every department that has part-time staffers for their part-time staff budget. Um, and essentially what would happen if those employees were no longer hired as temp workers and providing services to the Pueblo. So councillor Gomez, I'll be asking for a work session. Um, once I have, I'm waiting on one more department to put their stats together so I can come and present to you um per the three union contracts. We cannot lay staff off without cutting all part-time employees. So I will bring that dollar amount to you, what that would look like, and what services we would be talking about specifically. Just off the top of my head, I know the Parks Department has about three hundred and eighty part-time employees um that we hire year-round for the rides, uh, the swimming pools, the lawn mowing, the street skapes, um, all of those things that we have. Each, they did a great job breaking down how much staff is hired, what times of year they're hired, and what the dollar amount is that affects their budget. And then also what the income ratio to the city would be if we had to close the pools, the parks, um, those types of things, and the re- revenue ren- revenue that's generated. So in the next couple of months, I'll be in front of you presenting to what part-time employees could potentially look like. Um, but the only, the only cuts that we could make without substantially, you know, laying people off would be in those operating budgets, um, which is about fifteen million dollars a year.
Well, it's good to see our administration doing its due diligence and trying to find ways to do it already. So it'll be nice to see those presentations. But uh, and to see the opportunity cost of what it may take. So I'm hopeful to see all this information and glad we'll be much more informed going into this budget.
Well, for some of us who were around in the seventies and the eighties, we saw government take hits in the budgets across this nation and employees. You know, it affect uh all government employees. I mean, I think some of us older folks have been able to experience that and see what it, see what happens when that comes because it's sometimes that's what has to happen, unfortunately. Nobody wants that. But at some point, the, if you continue to deplete your savings account trying to um save the farm, and then you have no savings account and still no revenue, then all, you haven't prioritized the money in the savings account, which should be buying us like the extras. Like paying for if we want to have, build a bathhouse and it comes, you know, over budget or things are over budget. Those are the things, that savings account was supposed to be used for that. Not to, you know, not to uh do what it's kind of done. And so we need to do something different there and and those, those are hard choices, very hard choices. But that's what leader, good leadership is about, is making the hard choices when they need to be made.
I'll turn it back, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Yeah, just one thing. I've got uh in reference to one of the numbers I was, when I did research a while back, it was three hundred and fifty billion dollars, might have been left on the federal table for grants. Then I saw another time, it was four hundred billion, then it was two, I mean, it's all over the board. But these agencies in, for federal grants, don't, they want that money gone. This is due to the department, they're good to hold on to it, believe me, they got, they want it out. And I was just curious, I was reading an article, and I'll share it with you real quick. Uh, generally, cities employ multiple grant writers or dedicated grant writing teams to maximize funding opportunities. So I put our numbers in on reference to our population, things like that. And they talk about a workload, a single grant writer can typically handle between twenty-five to one hundred grant applications per year. And I know we have a very good grant writer here. Funding goals, if the city is aggressively suing grants, more writers may be needed. Collaboration, many cities rely on teams rather than individuals to manage research, writing and reporting. A mid-sized city like yours, and I put the numbers in, might benefit from at least two to five grant writers, but larger cities often have entire departments dedicated to grant writing. So just knowing that, again, I just want to throw that out. And I know that uh the administration now is looking carefully at grants up and and there's been some abuses with it at the federal level. But I just want to throw that out, food for thought, for what it's worth. Thank you.